Hello, I'm Corporal Kevlon Kirkpatrick. I'd like to go over one of the free services we provide at the Orlando Police Department, a residential security survey. Since we cannot be everywhere all the time, I'm going to provide you with an abundance of options to consider to better safeguard your home. One of the first challenges we see are address numbers. Address numbers should be visible from the street. Bushes and/or shrubs should be no higher than two feet. This fence although provides lots of natural visibility, it would be better aided by shrubs being lower than the fence, again, two feet in height. All fences and/or gates should be locked. Detached buildings and/or garages should be locked and secured. One of the most common ways burglaries are committed are through the front door. Front door damage and/or kick-in is one of the common ways that these residential burglaries are committed. One of the options to consider is replacing these screws in the strike plate with two-to-three inch screws. The other thing is making sure your bolt or your throw is at least one inch in length. As you see, this front door has a very large glass portion. One option to consider in reference to securing this and making this more challenging for bad guys to get in is shadow-proof material over this glass portion. So, we've provided you with some helpful hints. If you'd like a more comprehensive residential security survey, please feel free to contact 407-246-2369. Also, consider starting and maintaining an active neighborhood watch group.
I've driven that road to work for years now. I loved driving it. I enjoy getting into my car, driving to work, rocking out to my music, and seemingly get into work in no time flat. All of that's changed now since Interstate four started the ultimate project. Now, the roads are jammed. Coming into and leaving work is just stop-and-go traffic. Everyone's frustrated, and it's just not fun anymore. That's why I take alternative transportation. It's proven track record of relieving symptoms such as sitting in traffic and road rage. Leaves me feeling relaxed and ready for the workday. And with Huey Avenue being closed for a full eighteen months, it's important that you also consider alternative transportation. It worked for me. Maybe it'll work for you too.
Alternative transportation. Proven fast relief from traffic jams, road closures, and road rage. Not taking alternative transportation could produce side effects that include drowsiness, extreme irritability, increased sweating, bouts of rage, headaches, short speech, Tourette's syndrome, narcolepsy, nausea, upset stomach, diarrhea, constipation, body, swelling, hands and feet. Ask your doctor if alternative transportation is right for you. Chances are, the answer's yes.
Promoting physical activity is a public health priority for the city of Orlando, and our parks make it easy and affordable for residents to get up and to get moving. So, this new fitness facility that we're going to cut the ribbon on today is one of a number of fitness pods that we have opened in various parks, and it brings the number of them to twelve, and that's a lot of opportunities to get fit.
And now, another BFF moment.
Best friends forever?
It's best foot forward for pedestrian safety. Did you know you must stop for a pedestrian in a crosswalk? And stay stopped until they're in the opposite half of the road or on a raised median? It's the law. Stop for peds, or it could cost you $164.03 on your license. It could cost them their life. Join the movement. Put your best foot forward for pedestrian safety. I yield for peds. Do you?
to see pedestrians is often fatal. In Florida, seventy-five percent of pedestrian fatalities occur at night. Many drivers say they never saw the pedestrian. What will it take to see them? Can you see him now? Drivers, look for pedestrians, especially at night. Pedestrians, make sure you are visible. Alert tonight, alive tomorrow. Because safety doesn't happen by accident.
Here at Gilbert McQueen Park to cut the ribbon on this beautiful new playground. It looks so fantastic that kids have already been enjoying it, and today is the last day of last history month, so it's an opportunity to remember Gilbert McQueen for who this park is named for. Private Gilbert Demopolis McQueen was killed in action in the Korean War on June the third, nineteen fifty-one. He was a member of the Twenty-Fourth Infantry Regiment, Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division of the Army, and this park honors his name and his legacy, and we want to remember what he gave to this community.
Our shared dream is to be a place that celebrates rich history, where learning, laughter, and entertainment come together. A destination where memories and new friends are made. A destination where local flavor and eclectic cuisine meet. And where culture and community connect. Ideas are created and reimagined. We are rising, bigger and bolder.
Good afternoon and welcome to the August sixth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Orlando Code Enforcement Officer Brian Booth. Brian has been with the city for eleven years. He's a certified general contractor and is currently pursuing a degree in building construction technology. Part of working with the city, he was a self-employed general contractor. He was born in New York, got here to Orlando as soon as he could after that. He's married to Lourdes, and they have two children. Their son is a recent graduate of Valencia's Fire Rescue Institute and is a Florida-certified firefighter, and their daughter just graduated from Oviedo High School. Brian has volunteered the last six years with the Civil Air Patrol, which was established in nineteen forty-two, and its mission is to help transform youth into dynamic Americans and aerospace leaders by emphasizing leadership, aerospace fitness, and character. The invocation will be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Gray. You may stand or remain seated.
Thank you Mayor Dyer, commissioners, and guests. Dear Heavenly Father, please let me say thank you on behalf of all of us gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in our lives, in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. It is in your most blessed name, I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite, just as it is in the world.
Thank you Brian. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make the termination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you ma'am. Let's take up the minutes from the Agenda Review City Council Meetings of July twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye aye to those opposed motion carries. All right, we've been in our temporary chambers for it seems like a while, so we haven't been having any presentations, and we don't have any today, so I will move right into the mayor's update. And commissioners, how are you doing and moving back into your chambers, okay? Okay. It's a busy week for the commissioners because we've reopened the second floor and they're moving back into their offices and the clerks' offices back in place, but we will be taking the first floor out of service in the next couple of weeks, so that means everybody will have to enter through the second floor, which will be a little bit disruptive, but end of the day, it's all going to be great when we finish all the modifications. And I will let you know that we're probably not going to be able to hold the second meeting in council, the second meeting of this month in council chambers. It's more likely it's going to be the first meeting in September. We'd rather get all the technology installed instead of having a meeting where the technology's not completely functioning. So, just letting you know, you got another meeting in here, probably. Okay, to the mayor's update, I want to start off by actually congratulating Commissioner Stewart's spouse in enduring him for forty-two years. In sincerity, it is his forty-second wedding anniversary, and we want to say congratulations. And last week was a big week. We had the rollout of our downtown ambassadors. We officially relaunched that program. Component, it was a component of the DTO outlook to reinstate that program, and they will serve as safety escorts. They'll help visitors navigate their way to various venues, connect our most vulnerable individuals with social services. They are brightly outfitted, and every time I've been driving now, I catch a catch sight of one or two of them as they're doing their job, and somebody told me that when they've seen ambassadors, people have been coming up to them and talking to them and engaging them, so I think people are pretty happy with that we reinstated that program. Tomorrow is State of the City. We'll be at the Dr. Phillips Center DeVos Family Room and just share a little bit. I'll be, have a theme of sixty reasons to love Orlando, which happens to coincide with something else that's sixty tomorrow. And then, items of note on the consent agenda before is additional upgrades to our pedestrian traffic signals as we try to make sure that all of our streets are walkable and safe for pedestrians, and that's the only one I'm going to highlight. So, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our commissioners an opportunity to comment on items from the consent agenda and update you on important happenings from their district, and we'll start with District One Commissioner Jim Gray today.
Thank you Mayor, and I do have a few announcements before I do. Mayor, you know, oftentimes I embarrass you, but I seldom do it on purpose, but today I'm going to do it on purpose. And as you mentioned, you celebrate sixty years tomorrow. We have a tradition here, and usually whoever's birthday it is sings the loudest, but we'll see how that works. But happy birthday to you. Would you all please join me? Please join me. Ready? One, a two, a three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mayor Dyer. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. I will say, it's a great opportunity. I bet there aren't too many mayors that are able to have, to give the state of the city on their sixtieth birthday, so I think that's pretty cool.
Fantastic. We look forward to it. A couple of quick announcements in the district. I wanted a couple of thank yous. On the twenty-sixth of July, we had the city showcase that the Parks and Recreation folks put on for the kids in the summer program. I was fortunate enough to attend, and all the kids did a fabulous job, and I know I was lucky as a kid, but I don't ever remember being on a stage of that magnitude performing for friends and family. So, congrats to the folks in Parks and Rec and all the kids that participated. On the twenty-seventh, we were fortunate enough to have the mayor come to speak to the Lake Nona Chamber of Commerce, and that was really interesting. We enjoyed it, and you know, everybody came up afterwards and said, "Jim, is all that true?" And I said, "Yeah, for the most part. I think it's all pretty true." But Mayor, thanks for coming out. And finally, on Friday, we did the Citrus Square Back to School Event with backpacks for the kids. Thanks to my team and our folks at Amazon who had moved into the area, were kind enough to help us with some of that. So, thanks to that group and thanks to my team for putting that together, and that's all I have there.
Thank you. Commissioner, move to District Two, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you Mayor. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Sixty. Anyhow, on the twenty, am I the youngest guy here?
No.
No, okay, all right. So anyhow, on the twenty-sixth, I attended also the City of Orlando Showcase, and those kids, they were amazing, I can say enough. We have plenty of talent in the city of Orlando, so stay, stay in tune with the city of Orlando because there's a lot more to come. Those guys were amazing, and I don't think there's a single show that there was something to really be surprised of. These guys come up with new stuff every year, so congratulations to each and every one of the centers. Of course, I have to do a big shout-out to my centers because those guys work really hard, and Dover Shores have been winning for two years in a row, and of course, we'll be, we'll be pushing for the third, for the next year anyhow. But anyhow, moving along, back to school, just like Commissioner Gray said, we had a great one. We put both centers together, Dover Shores and Englewood, and those guys were really having fun, and for those who want to take a little peek about what was going on there, can look at our Facebook. One of the employees of the city was doing some dancing over there. I'm not going to mention her name because I don't want to embarrass her, but she was doing a great show herself, and the kids were really having fun, and I'll tell you what, nothing like watching these kids' big smiles and knowing that they're going to get their equipment for school and know that they will be ready. So, big shout-out to our guys, our centers, our managers, our staff. They did a great job and very proud of them. And the Orlando Police Department helped us out, especially, I want to give a special thanks to my District Two liaison, Jose Sanchez. We came up with a safety summit for our seniors at Englewood, the Englewood Community Center. Mr. Jana Butler did a great job, Nicole Palmer, our staff, our city, city staff, and some other of the people that supply equipment and whatnot for this, for this great summit. We had a good time. Those seniors couldn't have enough, and you know what? These are the seniors that built our nation into what it is today, and we got to take care of them. So, thank you to the Orlando Police Department. They did a great job, and those guys were really informed about what the new trends in crimes against them are. Couple of announcements, tomorrow night, we will have from six to eight in the east side of the parking lot at Sedano Supermarket on Curry Four Road, we'll be celebrating our Rock the House National Night Out kickoff party. This goes for all the District Two constituents and anybody else who wants to join in. We usually do this every year. Last year, we couldn't do it for circumstances out of our control, but we're expecting a great party this year, so everybody's invited. We also have, on, starting the fourteenth, we're going to have our Government Academy. This is the Spanish side of it. We do one in English, one in Spanish, so this one is in Spanish. So, there's still room for a few more students, if I may say, may call them like that, or it's a great, great academy. You learn anything and everything that has to do with government, from the federal government all the way down to our local government. So, thank you Mayor, Mr. Lane.
Thank you. Commissioner, move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you Mayor, and happy birthday. Thank you. Also, I want to say thank you to those who wished me a happy anniversary. I have shared several people that I can't imagine, a woman who would stay with me for forty-two days, and she's been with me for forty-two years. It's wonderful, so she's a wonderful woman to put up with me. I know, you guys don't have to say anything. You could have just been quiet. You don't have, I could hear, I could hear it from you guys.
It's worthy of an amen.
Yeah, it is worthy of an amen. I thought you were in church for a minute there. Let me also say a couple of things. Also, on the City of Orlando, the Parks and Recreation Showcase, it was great, and of course, Ortiz and Commissioner Gray, you said it well. I'll add one other thing. The theme this year was Buddy's Playlist, and I want you all to know that we have the most progressive mayor in the entire city, if you listen to his playlist, if that really is your playlist, Mayor, it was.
I can tell you, I don't think there was a single song that would have been on Buddy's playlist.
I didn't hear one country song at all.
Yeah, I don't think they knew any of the songs up and down.
Every time another song would come up, we would turn to each other and go, "Is that really on his playlist?" But it was great, the kids had a great time with that, and it's a lot of theme. Coming up, school is starting, want to wish everybody a And last week was a big week. We had the rollout of our downtown ambassadors. We officially relaunched that program component. It was a component of the DTO outlook to reinstate that program and they will serve as safety escorts. They'll help visitors navigate their way to various venues, connect our most vulnerable individuals with social services. They are brightly outfitted and every time I've been driving now, I catch a catch sight of one or two of them as they're doing their job. And somebody told me that when they've seen ambassadors, people have been coming up to them and talking to them and engaging them, so I think people are pretty happy with that we reinstated that program. Tomorrow is State of the City. We'll be at the Dr. Philip Center de Vos Family Room and just share a little bit. I'll be have a theme of sixty reasons to love Orlando, which happens to coincide with something else that's sixty tomorrow. And then items of note on the consent agenda before is additional upgrades to our pedestrian traffic signals as we try to make sure that all of our streets are walkable and safe for pedestrians. And that's the only one I'm going to highlight. So with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is a number of items are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our commissioners an opportunity to comment on items from the consent agenda and update you on important happenings from their district. And we'll start with District One Commissioner Jim Gray today.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have a few announcements before I do. Mayor, you know, oftentimes I embarrass you, but I seldom do it on purpose, but today I'm going to do it on purpose. And as you mentioned, you celebrate sixty years tomorrow. We have a tradition here and usually whoever's birthday it is sings the loudest, but we'll see how that works. But happy birthday to you. Would you all please join me? Please join me. Ready? One, a two, a three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. I will say it's a great opportunity. I bet there aren't too many mayors that are able to have to give the State of the City on their sixtieth birthday, so I think that's pretty cool.
Fantastic. We look forward to it. A couple of quick announcements in the district. I wanted a couple of thank yous. On the twenty-sixth of July, we had the city showcase that the Parks and Recreation folks put on for the kids in the summer program. I was fortunate enough to attend and all the kids did a fabulous job. And I know I was lucky as a kid, but I don't ever remember being on a stage of that magnitude performing for friends and family. So congrats to the folks in Parks and Rec and all the kids that participated. On the twenty-seventh, we were fortunate enough to have the mayor come to speak to the Lake Nona Chamber of Commerce and that was really interesting. We enjoyed it and, you know, everybody came up afterwards and said, Jim, is all that true? And I said, yeah, for the most part. I think it's all pretty true, but Mayor, thanks for coming out. And finally, on Friday, we did the Citrus Square Back to School Event with Backpacks for the Kids, thanks to my team and our folks at Amazon who had moved into the area. Were kind enough to help us with some of that. So thanks to that group and thanks to my team for putting that together. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District Two Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Sixty. Anyhow, on the twenty— Am I the youngest guy here?
No.
No, okay. All right. So anyhow, on the twenty-sixth, I attended also the City of Orlando Showcase and those kids, they were amazing, I can say enough. We have plenty of talent in the City of Orlando, so stay in tune with the City of Orlando because there's a lot more to come. Those guys were amazing and I don't think there's a single show that there was something to really be surprised of. These guys come up with new stuff every year, so congratulations to each and every one of the centers. Of course, I have to do a big shout out to my centers because those guys work really hard and Dover Shores have been winning for two years in a row and of course, we'll be pushing for the third, for the next year anyhow. But anyhow, moving along, back to school, just like Commissioner Gray said, we had a great one. We put both centers together, Dover Shores and Englewood, and those guys were really having fun. And for those who want to take a little peek about what was going on there, can look at our Facebook. One of the employees of the city was doing some dancing over there. I'm not going to mention her name because I don't want to embarrass her, but she was doing a great show herself and the kids were really having fun. And I'll tell you what, nothing like watching these kids' big smiles and knowing that they're going to get their equipment for school and know that they will be ready. So big shout out to our guys, our centers, our managers, our staff. They did a great job and very proud of them. And the Orlando Police Department helped us out, especially I want to give a special thanks to my District Two liaison, Jose Sanchez. We came up with a safety summit for our seniors at Englewood, the Englewood Community Center. Mr. Jana Butler did a great job, Nicole Palmer, our staff, our city staff and some other of the people that supply equipment and whatnot for this, for this great summit. We had a good time, those seniors couldn't have enough. And you know what? These are the seniors that built our nation into what it is today and we got to take care of them. So thank you to the Orlando Police Department. They did a great job and those guys were really informed about what the new trends in crimes against them are. Couple of announcements, tomorrow night, we will have from six to eight in the east side of the parking lot at Sedano Supermarket on Curry Four Road, we'll be celebrating our Rock, the House National Night Out kickoff party. This goes for all the District Two constituents and anybody else who wants to join in. We usually do this every year. Last year, we couldn't do it for circumstances out of our control, but we're expecting a great party this year, so everybody's invited. We also have on, starting the fourteenth, we're going to have our Government Academy. This is the Spanish side of it. We do one in English, one in Spanish, so this one is in Spanish. So there's still room for a few more students, if I may say, may call them like that. It's a great, great academy. You learn anything and everything that has to do with government from the federal government all the way down to our local government. So thank you, Mayor. Ms. Land.
Thank you. Commissioner, move to District Three Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and happy birthday. Also want to say thank you to those who wished me happy anniversary. I have shared several people that I can't imagine, a woman who would stay with me for forty-two days and she's been with me for forty-two years. It's wonderful. So she's a wonderful woman to put up with me. I know, you guys don't have to say anything. You could have just been quiet. You don't have, I could hear, I could hear it from you guys.
It's worthy of an amen.
Yeah, it is worthy of an amen. I thought you were in church for a minute there. Let me also say a couple of things. Also on the City of Orlando, the Parks and Recreation Showcase, it was great and of course, Commissioner Gray, you said it well. I'll add one other thing. The theme this year was Buddy's Playlist. And I want you all to know that we have the most progressive mayor in the entire city, if you listen to his playlist, if that really is your playlist, Mayor. It was—
I can tell you, I don't think there was a single song that would have been on my playlist.
I didn't hear one country song at all.
Yeah, I don't think they knew any of the songs.
It was, every time another song would come up, we would turn to each other and go, is that really on his playlist? But it was great. The kids had a great time with that and it's a lot of theme. Coming up, school is starting. Want to wish everybody a great new school year. I also want to welcome Janet, Juliette Reese, our new Ivanhoe Main Street Director. Welcome. She started a couple of weeks ago and has been going great guns and so get a chance to spend some time with her this week and get a chance to see the impact she's going to have on Ivanhoe Village. Really thrilled about that. I also want to share this morning, I had a chance to be over at the world's largest golf outing. It's sponsored by the Billy Casper Group and they do golf outings throughout the entire country. They have one hundred and ten, one hundred and twenty different golf courses that they manage. And they kick off one day where they raise money for the Fisher House. Fisher House is housing for veterans' families who are in VA hospitals and veterans' hospitals throughout the country. By the end of the day, there'll be five thousand golfers who will be playing throughout the country and they'll raise close to half a million dollars for Fisher House. It is a really, really cool event and we had a chance to host the president of Billy Casper Golf that was here, as well as do a feature on with Dub Strid and the Golf Channel this morning on Morning Drive. So it's a chance to have a little bit of fun, to talk about what we're doing in our community. And those of you who have the College Park paper, get a chance to read about the new Dub Strid as we start our ninety-fifth year coming up next year. Some other things that are coming forward, of course, the, on August twelfth, the Menel Museum is going to have a free mission for, as a part of the back to school, come and enjoy free tours. They've got some great new art exhibits there today and I think you'll enjoy it. The Orlando Science Center is open from one last summer weekend until eleven PM on Friday and Saturday night, this weekend, August tenth and eleventh. And then on Saturday, August eighteenth, from eleven to three, join the Orlando Shakespeare Theater for an open house to learn more about their upcoming thirtieth anniversary season. You can see the exclusive sneak peek of End the Heights Open Rehearsal and their newest show opens up in September, so visit orlandoshakes.org for more information. And then last, I want to share a special thank you to our group. We did our National Night Out kickoff for the summer, our summer safety splash over at the College Park Neighborhood Center Pool. I want to say a special thanks to our staff, Jessica and Maria and Kev for the work that they have done. Special thanks to OPD for the work they did and the cooking, OFD for the work that they had done and help us give tours to Fire Station Three, for Parks and Rec who did an incredible job with the pool and with the facility. And of course, our city offices that were there, the chance to talk. We had a great turnout, probably about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty people that came in over the night at hamburgers and hot dogs and just a chance to be part of a community. So it was really neat, enjoyed it and thank you to all the staff that were involved. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, move to District Four Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I'll chime in, happy birthday to you and it sure beats the alternative. Getting older is a privilege in eyed many, so happy birthday to you. On the agenda today, I'd like to thank everyone for the new offices. They are really quite nice and it's good to have an energy efficient city hall and a lot of the renovations are actually getting paid for from this, from the actual, from the energy savings and that's critically important. I mean, a lot of people don't realize why they do all these new things. Just the streetlights, the traffic signals, all the money that we're saving by converting that from old technology to new technology is really saving us. So again, it's not just to put on, you know, a fresh coat of paint. The main objective was to make us more energy efficient. Want to shout out to Chris Castro and all, everybody who's been working in city hall, but I'm delighted to see the difference. And the crazy thing is the energy efficiency is actually so much brighter than the old lighting that was costing us more to run. So it's just, it really looks nice and thanks to everyone that was a part of that. On the agenda today, the Osceola Gore sewer improvements. We've had a lot of construction going on in our downtown streets. It's critically important because that's failing infrastructure, but that's why our grid pattern and alternate streets are so critically important. So I want to thank the Public Works Department for coordinating the closures because we're having some issues sometimes with numerous streets being closed, making sure they coordinate the closures and communicate so that the residents know what's happening. On the agenda today as well, item C1, we're adding the Marsh House, the Eola House to the historic landmarks in the City of Orlando. I'm delighted to see that, as well as, you know, the fact that we were able to add one point three acres to Lake Eola Park and save that one home to be the office of the Lake Eola Parks folks that work over there, they do a great job. And on the agenda today as well, item C2 Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, Marty and his group have been doing a great job over there. This is for crosswalks with partnerships with FDOT and getting enhancements along Orange Avenue. So you're going to start seeing some results of that neighborhood improvement districts in District and Downtown South and I'm delighted to see those, those come forward. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Five Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with Mayor Dyer and Bishop Alan Wiggins at OUC, on July twenty-fifth, I joined them for a ribbon cutting of the New Horizon Apartment Homes there in District Five. As you know, the affordable housing stock is down throughout the country and one of the priorities of this council, with the support of the mayor, has been to build a stock of affordable homes here in the City of Orlando. So with that being said, there was a vacated property there, the Old Nichols Apartment, fifty-eight dilapidated units that was renovated and as Commissioner was just stating about sustainability and renewed energy, that particular project. And thank you, Chris, with your, for your leadership with that. To where many of the tenants there are low income, they will now have energy efficient apartments and their utilities will be down. They have solar pantering, community gardens there. It's just a great project when we start talking about a model here in the City of Orlando that I think will be implemented throughout the nation when it comes to rehab versus building new construction. There's units you can rehab and still maintain the energy efficiency. So thank you, council, for your supporting that and especially thank you, Mayor, for your continued support in affordable housing here in the City of Orlando. I am so excited about that ambassador program, that the Project DTO and thank you, Thomas, for your leadership. What I was more excited about when the mayor was calling up the ambassadors, the diversity of it all. I mean, there were women, there were many, many, many minorities on there going throughout the downtown area. When I think of Orlando, I think about how inclusive we are and that represented what Orlando is with those ambassadors and working hand in hand, not just to, for security reason, but to empower some of our fragile citizens that oftentimes only know the sidewalks of downtown Orlando as their home. And now these folks are going to be touched by these ambassadors and find out about the many opportunities and resources that's available here in the City of Orlando. This past Saturday, I'd like to thank our city recreation department, our OPD department and Lee Wesley, Second Harvest, A1 Orange. We had Orlando City Soccer, Orlando Magic. We provided over a thousand book bags for the citizens and this wasn't just a District Five effort. We had citizens that came throughout the City of Orlando to receive these supplies, to get groceries to start back the school year with their cabinets and refrigerators full with the partnership of Second Harvest. With the partnership Adidas tennis shoes, they helped provide and offset the cost for us for almost three hundred pairs of shoes so children can start back to school stepping in the right direction. With that, I do believe that when children don't have the necessities that other children might be afforded going back to school, it does something to their self-esteem and their morale. So I'd like to thank all those folks that was a part of this huge, one of our biggest back to school drives. We had people there standing in line, team since five-thirty in the morning, that stood in line for hours to receive these services. We had over thirty vendors there that ranged from mental health facilities, from tutoring, from etiquette and parenting coaching organizations. So it wasn't just a handout, it was a hand up and over two thousand people were served this Saturday there in the Paramore Community. Thank you Byron Brooks for coming out and to see that project and for your support. Byron mentioned something, would now the need being so great that maybe I start reaching out to other surrounding counties, because I did not turn anyone away, but there were people from different counties that came and said that these services was not available in their, in their county. So next year, hopefully, we'll be able to partner with other counties or maybe assist them with some of the things that we're implementing here in the City of Orlando. I do have something that I do want to mention. We have a here, ordinance on hearing, second read number one, which is our contractors' business park site. I've received many comments and emails regarding the expansion of this site and I just wanted to assure the citizens that the City of Orlando shares in the desire to protect much of the land previously held in the conservation easement of that site as possible. Until last year, the property was held in a conservation easement. The St. John Water Management District chose to release the entire conservation easement, the entire conservation easement. With this new development, when it was proposed, through the support of Mayor Dyer and city staff, under my leadership, the city learned that the water management district had released the entire conservation. So the city, at the cause, our cause, hired an environmental consultant to review the proposed development and the impacted land that had been released from the conservation easement by the water management district. And working with staff and our environmental consultant, the applicant agreed to save thirteen point five acres of conservation easement that was released by the water management district. This means that thirteen-five acres will be maintained as open space and wetlands on this property. This allows this portion of the land to be conserved to provide tree coverage, habitat and recharge areas, while allowing the developer to utilize the more than compromised southern portion of the site for development. I do believe that this development will bring opportunity for new local jobs for residents as well as provide for shopping and dining opportunities in this neighborhood. I will also be asking the developer, something I discussed with them, and it's not in this proposal, but I will be asking them not to put fast food restaurants on these parcels. I do believe as we move forward in healthy neighborhoods, that even the inner city deserve healthy establishments when they go out to eat. I do not agree that we need more fried chicken restaurants, Burger Kings, Taco Bells, nothing against those establishments, but I do not believe we need it on that site. So I will be asking the developer to put a stipulation in, legal to put a stipulation in this agreement of zoning that no fast food restaurants go there. If we can't make that agreement today, I will be asking staff to pull that item and go back to the drawing board with that. So with that being said, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner, move to District Six Commissioner Rains.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor. I do want to give a huge thank you, a huge thank you to our communications guy, Isaac. They came out in that sweltering heat to take pictures and video that event. Thank you, Isaac. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, District Six Commissioner Rains.
Thank you, Mayor. Item C12, the youth hostel. I just want to thank staff and specifically Katie McGruder and Dean Grandin, Chief Planning Official, and Katie being the project planner for this particular item. This was reviewed and I really appreciate the patience that you guys had with me and making sure that everything was, was going to be okay for this particular project. We welcome all projects within the City of Orlando and I'd like for this youth hostel to work and to work in the North I Drive area because it is about business and business opportunities. So we expect some good things and we just hope that this works out well for the owner developer. And then also on item F1, the Lean Satisfaction for Grand Avenue Economic Community Development Corporation. Now this is really a true celebration for Grand Avenue Economic Community Development Corporation because in two thousand and three Reverend Fred L. Maxwell signed this, this document as Chair of the Board for the Grand Avenue Economic Community Development Corporation. And of course, in two thousand and five, he passed away, so Reverend Maxwell was ninety-six years old when he signed this agreement and he passed away when he was ninety-eight years old. And he had been the pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church for thirty-seven years. Helane Bloom, local attorney, was a part of the Grand Avenue Economic Community Development Corporation. So was I when I was on the police department, so I was a part of that particular organization. So it's really good to see that they have come a long way in providing housing in the area. So I just really wanted to highlight Reverend Maxwell because as Jeff Coonert said of the Orlando Sentinel, he was a man who walked among the powerful and the poor with equal ease. And so this goes out to Grand Avenue Economic Community Development Corporation and thank you for all of the hard work that you've been doing and that you continue to do in our area. I'd like to say that on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth through Saturday, July twenty-eighth, I attended the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials Summer Conference that was held in Hollywood, Florida at the Diplomat Resort. Attorney Ben Crump was a luncheon speaker for Saturday and he was a great inspirational speaker for all of us. I also serve as chaplain for the NBC Leo and have been doing that for several years now. Then I also attended the Forty-Second Annual Noble, which is the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives Training Conference and Exhibition, which was also held at Hollywood, Florida at the Diplomat Resort. And I also participated in the Memorial March and this is where Noble recognized its fallen officers for that particular year. And this was held in the City of Miami Gardens, Florida. And then on Thursday, I'm sorry, on Friday, I attended the He Got Up Appreciation Luncheon held at First Baptist Church of Orlando there at the Faith Hall. Pastor Tim Johnson and attorney Beatrice Wells-Brown, they did an excellent job in recognizing all of those that assisted them with the He Got Up presentation that was done throughout the city through several different community centers. And I would say that at Dr. James R. Smith Center, they had over seven hundred participants in that particular He Got Up event. And also Commissioner Robert Stewart was also on hand at this luncheon too. This is a great luncheon. It was a barbecue luncheon. They had barbecue chicken, ribs, baked beans and, I mean, it was just really great. So it was great eating. And then on Saturday, I attended the Drop the Puck for Orlando Fire Department Hockey Team as they played Orange County Fire Department Hockey Team. And this was held at the RDV Sportsplex at Maitland Summit Boulevard there in Orlando. So that was a great event, very well attended. Many family members were there to support both teams and it was, it was, it was nice. I also attended the Grand Avenue School Community Meeting that was held in Holden Heights at the community center. at the community center. The staff, Lisa Early and others, Rodney Williams, were on hand to present the plans for the community center there in Holden Heights. One item of particular, Mayor, and you mentioned this the last time, was the, Patty, that thing that you do?
Pottery studio.
The pottery studio.
That thing that I do.
Yeah. That thing that you do so well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The pottery studio. To see the plans on that, it really made me feel good concerning that because it was a concern about a pottery studio coming in Holden Heights, but I see that it would be very beneficial for our young people and for others throughout the city of Orlando. It has a great plan to it, and to see the number of classrooms in there along with the kennel is just going to be really nice. And then coming up on Saturday, August the 11th, I'm hosting the District Six Annual Crime Prevention Walk and Back to School Event. This bookbag giveaway would be to all of the participants and the young people that really walk with us and show that they are coming against crime and making a statement about crime. The registration will be at 8:00 a.m. at the Washington Shore Shopping Center there at 3599 Columbia Street, and the crime walk begins promptly at 9:00 a.m. And we will walk from the Washington Shore Shopping Center to the Dr. James R. Smith Center where we will have crime prevention information topics by Officer Landon Thomas, and he's going to speak on bullying, stranger danger, misuse of social media, and law enforcement. So this should be real good. And the next thing is Tuesday, August the 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Representative Bruce, State Representative Bruce Anton of District 46, and myself will partner to host our annual community job fair at the Dr. James R. Smith Center at 1723 Bruton Boulevard. So this is going to be a great event. So far, we have over 36 vendors that will be there to provide some job opportunities. Plus, we will have expungement proceedings that will be going on, so those individuals that need to get their rights restored, they can come and apply. And so with that, Mayor, I move the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Rains, second by Commissioner Sheen. And I would like to just note that item G-1, which is meeting minutes and approving actions of the Lew Gardens Board, Commissioner Hill asked us to modify one action which gave free admission to active and retired military personnel, veterans, to include disabled veterans as well. And we did that by consensus at the agenda review meeting. So with that, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Without objection, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. We have four items. Three of them are minutes, so let's take those, and then we'll have Thomas come up on the fourth one, which we have already voted on as the city and will need to vote on as the CRA. But number one is CRA advisory meeting minutes from the 27th of June. It's your motion to accept. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next is approving CRA minutes from June the 25th.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And then approving minutes from July 9th, CRA meeting. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And then the fourth is relates to Paramore Oaks. Thomas?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As Mayor said, item number four is Paramore Oaks Affordable Housing Incentive Documents. You recall, of course, that on May 29th of this year, you approved a third amendment to the developers' agreement for this project, which allocated just over $1.1 million in an affordable housing incentive. Today's action would do several things. One, it would create a promissory note as well as a mortgage and security agreement that would convey the terms of the affordable housing incentive. Secondly, it would approve subordination agreements for both of those instruments, to both the construction loan as well as the permanent loan for the project. And then finally, you would approve a fourth amendment to the developers' agreement, which would correct a scribbler's error in the Third Amendment, which erroneously included Paramore Oaks LLC rather than Invictus Development LLC. Since there are no additional funds contemplated in today's action, of course, there is no fiscal impact associated with it, the CRA Advisory Board has unanimously recommended to approve. Any questions?
Motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheen. Questions for Thomas? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, is that all the business coming forward with CRA, Thomas?
That's all. Thank you.
Then we will adjourn the CRA meeting. We'll convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Meeting, Board of Directors, for the purpose of accepting minutes from the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District Advisory Board Meeting of July the 11th, 2018.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. We will, without objection, adjourn the NID meeting, and we will reconvene the city council meeting. And that brings us to hearings. Number one, which is an order approving the rescission of the City of Orlando Downtown DRI Development Order. I will go ahead and accept a motion on that.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. And then this is a public hearing, so is there anyone from the public that would like to testify relating to this matter? Any cards, Madam Clerk?
No.
Then we'll close the public hearing, discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Hearings ordinances, first reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2018-44, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to accessory dwelling units, townhomes, and multifamily housing, amending Chapter 5 Orlando City Code to provide consistent terminology, amending Chapters 58, 61, 62, 65, 66, and 67 Land Development Code to allow accessory dwelling units and townhomes as a permitted use with appearance review in certain zoning districts, to provide design development, appearance review, and building site standards for accessory dwelling units, townhomes, multiplex, and multifamily development, and to update definitions and provide consistent terminology, providing legislative findings, and for suburbility codification, corrections scribblers errors on effective date.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Dean or Elizabeth is going to do a presentation on this. Dean, this would apply to both this ordinance and the next ordinance, right, your presentation?
No, Mayor. I think this is just on the, this is on the housing amendments.
Okay.
Elizabeth will be presenting on the Contractors' Business Park and the Growth Mansion.
No, I meant, don't 44 and 45 relate to the housing amendments?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, right?
Correct.
Forty-four and forty-five. So what I thought I would do, Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and read forty-five as well so that in the record, the presentation will relate to both of them?
Mayor, the presentation this afternoon is only on forty-four, not on forty-five.
Not on forty-five? Okay. Then we'll just stay right where we are and do it on forty-four.
But we appreciate your interest in this topic. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to do a brief introduction on this, on housing land development code amendments. As you know, the city's been participating in a regional affordable housing initiative for the last year and a half, and we presented the city's overall strategy at the March 2018 MPB meeting. The primary short-term strategy is to amend the land development code to increase the supply of market-rate housing that is affordable to more households. These amendments do not address income-restricted affordable housing. I can't stress that enough. We're not talking about housing that is restricted or in any way provided to governmental assistance. We're talking about creating housing that is affordable by virtue of its size or by its design. We've had discussions with developers on this issue. We have a city webpage on the city planning site, and we've also done outreach to a great number of people through emails. So what are our goals? To make it easier to build small units by reducing parking standards and allowing accessory units in more places. Make it easier to build on small lots by allowing more site planning flexibility for townhomes and small multifamily dwellings and buildings, and improve the design of multifamily buildings. Today's proposed codes, and this is just for Chapter 44, is to amend townhomes, multifamily, and accessory dwelling unit standards. So first of all, on the townhome goals, we want to allow smaller minimum lot size and prohibited front-loaded units. And front-loaded would mean garage, so we're asking that the garage be placed to the rear. This would encourage efficient layout on unusual lots, and we have a lot of those unusual lots in the city of Orlando, particularly in traditional city, and also to encourage and require guest parking. From a site planning perspective, ministry review for up to 100 units, municipal planning board would still be required to review projects that are larger than 100 units. We would reduce the minimum lot size, prohibit front-loaded units, and eliminate street front-end requirements, allowing units to face a courtyard or to deteriorate the lot. Parking would be changed, requiring that there be one space for five units for guest parking for 20 units or more, and require a second legal space for units greater than 1,500 square feet. In terms of design standards, we're looking for appearance review to encourage authentic design and minimize boxy shapes, require transparency in windows, and 18-inch elevation above grade so they're not on slab, and roof decks would count towards a total maximum height limitation as prescribed by the code. I would just say, going back to the minimum lot size for townhomes, we're suggesting that it be 1,000 square feet. Right now, the code requires 1,600 feet minimum, 1,800 average. To do that actually discouraged a lot of townhome developments to be done in the city of Orlando, and we think this will encourage more townhome development to occur. On accessory dwelling units, we're providing benefits to homeowners and their tenants. Maintain character of existing neighborhoods, allow aging in place, provide affordable housing for recent grads and other smaller households. ADUs are popular where they are allowed, but current code prohibits them on most lots. Case in point, Loria Park is a new neighborhood that allows for ADUs. Almost 20% of the units built down at Loria Park in Lake Nona have accessory dwelling units, and they're only creating about 35 to 40 units per year. In the city as a whole, we only allow for accessory dwelling units if your lot is 1.5 to two times the minimum standard lot size in the district that you're located. As such, we've only gotten three or four of these kind of units per year for the rest of the city outside of Loria Park. So you can see where there's a real discrepancy, and we believe these changes to the code will encourage that accessory dwelling unit pace to increase. We would allow in all residential zones if lots meet the minimum code lot size. It would not require a CUP as the code requires today. We would not allow as a third unit on a duplex lot in the R2A district, they may be either attached, detached, or separate from the buildings, such as above the garage. Right now, we have different definitions for different accessory dwelling units. The maximum size would be 500 square feet for standard-sized lots. So if you have a standard-sized lot, you're limited to 500 square feet, which, by the way, is about the size of a second-story over a standard two-car garage, or 1,000 square feet for oversized lots. Maximum floor ratio inclusive of accessory dwelling units would be limited to .50. Parking requirements, we're suggesting that there be none required for units that are 500 square feet or less, but if you have a unit that's greater than that, you'd be required to have one independent parking space. Setback changes for two-story windows facing rear yards. Going to the multifamily goals, we're looking to encourage high-quality design. These are on smaller lots, and encourage small units. So what we're suggesting is that, if you look at what we have today, 67% of Orlando households are comprised of either one or two-person households, but the average new home being built in the city of Orlando today is 2640 square feet. So you can see there's a disconnect between the type of household formation we're having in the city of Orlando versus the typical house that's being built, at least for ownership. So this would encourage small apartment buildings. We're calling them multiplex for three-to-eight dwelling units, larger than duplex, but small than a large multifamily development. This can fit on infill sites and be compatible with nearby single-family neighborhoods, and historically popular, because we had a lot of these types of units back in the 20s and 30s, but no longer common today. Most developers aren't doing it, but they're not doing it for lots of reasons, including our code is too restrictive to allow them. So the multifamily setbacks, right now, our code is very suburban in nature. This would allow for multifamily to be done on smaller lots without those larger setbacks, except that they would still need to be having the 20-foot setback in the front. We would prohibit parking between the building and the street. Appearance review would be required. We're also looking to reduce parking requirements for the smaller units, and efficiencies up to 500 square feet would be reduced from one space to .75 spaces in studios, which are up to 750 square feet, from 1.5 spaces to one space. Standards, these are important. In order to encourage these small units, a majority of the units in this type of complex need to be 750 square feet or less, again, smaller one-bedroom or studio apartments. Heights will be limited to the zoning district or three stories, whichever is less. Five-unit maximum for R2B, otherwise multifamily district, and option to preserve the existing units on the site and build additional units in the rear. But the key is you'd have to keep those existing units onsite. The code amendments are intended to encourage infill redevelopment, construction of small units, and high-quality urban design. Myself and staff are available for questions or comments that you might have. That's my presentation.
Okay. Questions for Dean?
I have one question.
Commissioner Rains.
Thank you, Mayor. Dean, under the proposed amendments, delete the prohibition on second-story windows facing rear yards. Can you elaborate on that a little?
Right now, well, if you have an accessory structure on your property today, there's a prohibition on rear-facing windows. The thought being is that because those accessory units are in the rear yard area, that they could oversee or overlook the neighboring property. The fact of the matter is we're in a pretty urban environment. People can see your rear yard from their side, or the other property on the other side can see it from that rear. So the thought is that to allow for reasonable transparency, we should be allowing for some transparency in that rear yard setback.
Okay.
There, I have a question.
Commissioner Gray.
Dean, the area of discussion is parking, or maybe lack thereof. Lead me through that process that you and the team talked about with the parking requirements. My sense is, even if it's a small unit, a single young student, as we point out here, or recent graduate, they're still probably most likely going to have a car. What was the team talking about in terms of parking? What's the thought there?
Well, the thought is that most of these are going to be occurring in traditional city. A lot of these will be students. These will be younger people that may not have a car. Again, the thought is that because it's traditional city, there's more than adequate on-street parking. We're not saying you can't provide a parking space. We're just suggesting to encourage these units that we won't require an additional parking space onsite. In reality, a lot of houses are built with two or more parking spaces. The code today only requires one parking space required for a single-family residence. So in reality, most houses have two or more spaces already. So we thought it would not be appropriate to add an additional parking requirement for that small unit of less than 500 square feet, which is essentially the size of a studio. You're not going to have more than one person in those units.
Yeah. I totally understand. For what it's worth, one of the biggest complaints I get, even in suburbia, is the on-street parking, and I get the benefit of slowing people down, et cetera, but a lot of neighbors complain about parking on the street because it ends up being an obstacle course for those going through. I've worn out Billy Adaway and his team with this. I'm just concerned about the lack of parking, and yes, people have garages and driveways, but they're full of other... Yes, people have garages and driveways, but they're full of other stuff, and they don't seem to park in the garage. They park in the street. So I'm concerned about the parking component of this, or lack thereof.
Commissioner, I would just say, we hear your concern. The fact of matter is, even in Loryet Park, we're not requiring additional parking for those accessory dwelling units. It seems to be working there. This is something that we would like to at least encourage for now. If for some reason we believe that parking becomes more and more of an issue or a problem with this amendment, we can always go back and amend the code again to require that parking. But we think, in order to jumpstart and to encourage single-family homeowners to build accessory dwelling units on their property, in a lot of places, they have very constrained sites. To ask for that additional parking would probably discourage a lot of them from not doing that. So we would like to see if we could at least try the code amendment without that additional parking requirement.
Okay. And one other question. I caught it briefly. A hundred units or less is not going to MPB. Staff can approve that. Help me.
We have a provision in our code now on administrative master plans, and I believe it's less than eighty units is the hundred, but this would apply to the townhome developments. Right now, it's multifamily. So what we're basically doing is expanding the multifamily exemption for administrative master plans to townhome developments as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
And if I could just add, administrative master plans should have the same standards as going before the municipal planning board. If in the event the zoning official or the plan official does not approve a master plan administratively, it goes as an appeal to the planning board, and they would come to you.
No, and I get that. I think what, the benefit of a public forum like a MPB is not for those who get approval, but those who are against something, but it's approved, it's better for me to say, "Look, it went through a public forum. You had your chance to make your argument to the municipal planning board." In this one, it's really to the staff, right?
Right. I would just add level of comfort for you all. The fact of matter is that most multifamily developments today, at least done by the major corporations, are at least 200 units. More in the 250 to 300 unit range. So any project that's under 100 dwelling units is likely to be much smaller than 100. So it's an artificial number in a way, but most projects that are less than 100 are probably more like 20 or 30 units, not a large project.
Right. But we are seeing the major builders do those. Weekly Homes is doing some here, right? Lenar is doing some. We're starting to see them get into that.
Right, right.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Further discussion, hearing, no, in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, that doesn't have a presentation associated with it.
Mayor, just on that item real quick. That item will require a 501 hearing.
Oh, you're right. Okay, this ordinance requires a public hearing after five o'clock, the one we just voted on. Unless we, by a supermajority, vote to hold the second public hearing at our normal city council meeting time, which is two o'clock. Stack recommends that we hold the second public hearing at a regularly scheduled city council meeting beginning at two o'clock on, is this right, Kyle, September 4th versus August the 20th?
Whenever the next meeting is.
Well, that's not the next meeting. So how about at our next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which is in August? Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill. In favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to hearings, ordinances, first reading, number two, ordinance 2018-45.
Ordinance 2018-45, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, relating to zoning districts and uses, amending provisions of the Land Development Code to clarify district regulations and allowable use tables for congregate living facilities, public benefit uses, modifications to legally non-conforming buildings and home occupations, and to update definitions, correct errors, and provide consistent terminology, providing legislative findings, and for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Ings, you want to make yours the second?
Okay.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing, no, in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, let's move to hearings, ordinances, second reading, number one.
Ordinance 2018-35, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, relating to the city's growth management plan, providing the summer 2018 package of GMP amendments pursuant to the expedited state review process, amending the GMP to change the future land use designation from office low intensity to conservation, from office low intensity to public recreational institutional, from office low intensity to community activity center, from community activity center to office low intensity, from conservation to public recreational institutional, from conservation to office low intensity, from industrial to office low intensity, from industrial to public recreational institutional, from conservation to industrial, and from office low intensity to industrial, amending the GMP to change the future land use designation from conservation to urban activity center, amending the GMP to create future land use subarea policy S.3.5, amending the urban design element 8.4.1, amending future land use element objective 5.2 policies 1.1.6, 2.1.6, 5.2.1, and 5.2.2, and create figure LU-2E, amending the GMP to create future land use subarea policy S.3.6, amending the GMP to create future land use subarea policies S.5.4, S.6.16, and S.11.6, amending the future land use element policies 2.1.4, 2.2.3, amending the GMP to create future land use element objectives 2.5 and policies 2.5.1 and 2.5.2, amending the conservation element policy 1.5, 1.5.5, 1.7.8, figure C-2 Part A and C-2 Part B, amending the recreation and open space element policy 1.1.2, amending the GMP to create housing element objective 2.10, policies 2.10.1, 2.10.2, and 5.1.3, amending the recreation element figures R-1A and R-1B, and amending the GMP to create recreation element policies 1.1.19 and 1.1.20, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and effective date.
Mayor.
I move to approve of the proposed ordinance of number 2018-30 and 2018-35 with the additional condition that the associated master plan of 2017-10026 be amended to prohibit fast-food establishments on lots two through four on the master plan. For the purpose of this master plan, fast-food establishments means an establishment characterized by a large care-out clientele, long hours of service, some are open for breakfast, are open for lunch and dinner, some are open for late at night, or 24 hours per day, and high turnover rates for eat-in customers, excuse me, I apologize, and high turnover rates for eat-in customers. Limited-service eating establishments do not provide table service. Patrons generally order at the cash register and pay before they eat. And food and drink product is served in single-use disposable containers. This definition does not include establishments that principally serve drink products such as coffee and tea. So this is based on the ITE definition of fast-food.
Second. Okay, motion and a second, and that was to ordinances 2018-35 and 2018-30, which overlap in some respect, and I know that we have a staff presentation that relates to both of those. So what we'll do is, and we have people that are signed up, same people for both of those. So what we'll do is handle the presentations and the testimony, and we'll vote separately on each of the ordinances after we've taken the joint testimony. Elizabeth?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and city council members. My name's Elizabeth Dang, here today to present the Contractors Business Park Project. This site is located north of West Princeton Street and west of John Young Parkway. It's approximately 29 acres, and it's part of the larger 66-acre Contractor Business Park, which includes the Walmart and the Business Park parcels. So today, we have two ordinances on the agenda. The first is the future land use map amendment, which is included along with a number of other growth management plan amendments. And the second is a rezoning ordinance. So this map here shows the existing and proposed future land use. You can look at this in three parts. I'll move from north to south. So this piece right here in the northwest corner currently is zoned for industrial land use, and that will then change to conservation. The portion in the middle right here that's not hatched is conservation today and would remain that way. And then the third portion here, which is 15 acres, it would be changed from conservation to urban activity center. So then the associated zoning map changes are matched together. This northwest portion goes from H. Holding to conservation, and the southeast portion goes from conservation to AC2, all with the Wakava overlay. So a bit of background on this site, in 2006, this site was approved for the Walmart Plan, which currently exists, as well as a second lot for Business Park, of which the first phase has been developed. And then the remainder of the site was proposed for conservation. So the master plan before you, that the municipal planning board approved, shows that there are new stormwater ponds here in the center of the site, which would serve both the Business Park parcel and three new out parcels that are being created for future commercial development. This map shows the Wakava study area, and you can see the subject property circled in orange here within the Wakava study area. It is a rather large overlay. It covers Rosemont, Mercy Drive, much of College Park. It's basically north of Colonial Drive and west of I-4, and it has certain development standards that go along with that. So this site was annexed in 1987, and the conservation easement for that western half of the site was put in place in 2006 in conjunction with the Walmart development. That easement was released by the Water Management District about a year ago. The applicant followed up by submitting an environmental assessment with their application and noting also that any future development still does require mitigation through state and federal review agencies. The city hired E Sciences to perform an independent study of the potential impacts to the wetlands, and David Menken is here today from E Sciences, if you all have any questions for him. But the findings of the study is basically that the site is not very well-connected to other wetland areas because of the road impacts over time, meaning that the ability for wildlife to move in and out is a bit limited. There are some signs of soil subsidence and encroachment of nuisance plant species. So despite the concerns about the quality of the wetland, it's important to the city here to ensure that open space standards and the Wakava overlay are met. So that's a 20% open space standard for development. So the entire site, including the Walmart, is 66 acres. That would require 13.2 acres of open space, which, up to 50% of which, can be stormwater. So this site includes a full 13.46 acres of conservation, plus an additional 8.1 acres of stormwater, for a total of 32% open space, which exceeds the minimum requirement in our comp plan. I also like to point out that we're here for a second reading, and after the first reading of every comp plan amendment, that amendment is sent to state review agencies. And we got comments, letters back from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Department of Economic Opportunity, the St. John's River Water Management District, and the South Florida Water Management District. All of those agencies recommended approval with no comments or objections, so they've all reviewed this project. So to ensure that the future of that 13.5 acres remains open space, we're proposing a subarea policy for the site, which is part of the comprehensive plan, would require a public hearing and a review by city council to change this subarea policy. So this is really the protection that even if the applicant were to get a permit from the Water Management District or something like that, this subarea policy would ensure that those 13.8 acres remain undeveloped. In addition, there would be standards prohibiting stormwater ponds in that area, requiring buffers, and making sure that the off-site abutting development minimizes any off-site impacts. So as a follow-up to this, another section of the future land use or comprehensive plan amendments does talk about more general policies that wouldn't apply to this particular project, but would apply to future project, that provides staff and the city council a little bit more guidance on what needs to be submitted if someone does in the future ask to change the future land use designation from conservation to some other use. So that will ensure that we have very specific submittal requirements, a requirement to cover the city costs for hiring a consultant, if we need one, to review the project, and it provides some criteria for evaluating the request based on some existing citywide goals for open space, tree coverage, and protection of environmentally sensitive areas. So with that, I'd like to see if there are any questions, and I'm happy to answer those.
Questions? Commissioner Stewart?
Elizabeth, help me out. I'm trying to understand the statement you have, was the South, the St. John's River Water Management District released the conservation easement in June of 2017. Tell me what that means legally.
So typically, in the past, when land was placed in a conservation easement, it was in perpetuity. It typically was done for mitigation of other sites, and it would remain conservation for the foreseeable future. So at a city level, we didn't have any special policies associated with this property. We knew it wasn't an easement, and we thought it would stay that way. We were pretty surprised when the Water Management District released that easement, which makes it just like any other property in the city of Orlando. It still requires all the same review process prior to development, but it's not in any way protected the way it was through that easement. So it's, to the Water Management District, it's just the same as developing any other property. You go through the review. It still requires, if they build on any portion of the wetland part, they then have to mitigate that potential impact as well.
So by releasing the easement, you mean release the restrictions that they would have placed on their...
Right. It was a development restriction.
So it wasn't tied to a particular property at any time, and in doing that...
Well, it was put in place because the Walmart needed to mitigate.
Right.
So they were able to find, I guess, an alternative way after the Walmart was built to mitigate the Walmart impact somewhere else, off-site, within the Wakava Basin, and then that meant this site was no longer protected.
Then we just use a standard, I mean, the other, as you said, other things that required, do the same thing.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, so Elizabeth, can you speak upon the 13.5 acres that the applicant is agreeing to preserve? That's a win, actually, for the citizens and ourselves, because they don't have to agree because of the wastewater, not wastewater, I apologize, the water management releasing those easements. So can you expand on that?
Right. So by releasing the easement, that land becomes equivalent to any other undeveloped land in the city of Orlando that might be zoned to any particular zoning district. The Water Management District reviews those all the exact same way. So it took away that protection, and so the city said, "Well, hang on a minute. Let's not take it away for 100% of the acres. Let's preserve some onsite." So they could indeed ask for the entire thing to be developed, but because of our Wakava standards, and we have a 20% open space requirement, even if the wetland is not pristine anymore, there is a value to having open space and tree coverage and wildlife habitat, and that's why the Wakava requirement is... why the Wakava requirement is for 20% for all developers over five acres, regardless of if they have a wetland onsite.
Thank you.
Further questions for Elizabeth? Okay. Number of cards, and I think the first couple are the developers or represent the developers. I have Craig Govan and Bob Lockren. Do I have that right? Are you guys together, those two?
Would you like us together?
However you want to do it, I'm just...
My name is Craig Govan.
And Bob Lockren with Lockren Engineering.
I'm the development manager for this particular project with Torres Investment Holdings at 610 North Wyomar Road in Maitland.
Craig, if you could come over to the mic or pull the mic over to you.
Craig Govan at 610 North Wyomar Road in Maitland. We've owned this property almost 15 years, and we had the opportunity to develop the 30 acres of former conservation easement. And working with Commissioner Hill and staff, we've narrowed this down to basically three out parcels along Princeton Street. And I completely agree with Commissioner Hill. There is plenty of tacos and chicken out there. So we looked at the notes from our April 5 meeting, and nowhere does it say fast food. So we really weren't contemplating that. But it was pointed out today, so I agree with your assessment. We did talk about sit-down restaurants. We talked about quality commercial, and we talked about perhaps showrooms to provide quality development and future jobs that were meaningful. So thank you for pointing that out, and we're 100% agreement with that. If I could ask you to open the 24 by 36-inch sheets that were passed out to you that look like this. This is basically a sheet that indicates what the local businesses feel about this. So we took the time to go around and meet with 17 different businesses that surround the property. Each red dot represents an actual petition that was signed, dated, with the owner's or the representative's phone number on it that corresponds to this map. And you'll see those petitions in the other stack that I believe was handed out to you that look like this, and also included the owner or representative's business card, so that you can, you probably know a lot of these owners. They include, to the south of the property, Millwork Sales, Carrier Air Conditioning, Complete Reproduction Resources. Number four is Restaurant Depot. Number five is the Auto Shop. Number six is ABF Freight. Number seven is CF Sour. They sell restaurant food and condiments. Number eight, Rush Trucking. Number nine, Public Storage. Number 10, Bedrosian Tile and Marble, which is just being completed now. Number 11 is Let's Go Taxes. Number 12, Wormly Roofing. Number 13, Post FX Studios. Number 14, Kitchens RTA. Number 15 is Superior Metal Fabricators. And missing printing time was Walmart and the Taffian Bakery. I just simply asked them if they were in support of this development or would be against it, and you can see they all checked off or wrote in some form that they were in support of it. It was just an effort to try and get an idea of what the business community, which is basically the only surrounding properties, there's no residential near here, what they felt about new development, and you can see it there. We also have our biologist here and also our civil engineer. If you have any specific questions or any development-type questions for me, I'm happy to take them.
Commissioner Stewart?
Okay, I'm not an engineer, so the little squiggly lines is direction water is flowing and the stormwater, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so we're moving a lot of stormwater. I assume that's coming out of the current canal over there between the highway and your property?
I'll let...
So you're moving to the highway and then moving to there and then moving across the street?
Yeah, Commissioner, the natural drainage path goes north to south in this area, so I'm not sure what map you're looking at at the moment.
Right here.
Okay.
That pipe is there taking that, is taking the core of that water across and moving across Princeton?
There's a series of six or eight storm culverts which cross underneath Princeton, and the flow from the 30-acre site, if you will, drains naturally down to those six pipes, a swell, drainage ditch on the side of the road, north side of the road. The pipes convey it to the south side of the road to another wetland body on the south side. That's a natural drainage path.
So I guess the question I'm asking is, and from a hydrology standpoint, area to the east of the, area due south of Walmart, where is that water going to? Is there other, are there other locations that bring it into the same wetland?
On the southwest corner at the intersection?
That would be the northwest corner of the John Young and Princeton, but it'd be the southern portion of the Walmart.
Well, if I understand what you're asking, the Walmart has its own stormwater pond.
They're sending everything there?
Yes, it discharges out of there and comes into those six or eight pipes.
And then comes back in the same way, comes back across the street?
That it?
That's it.
Anybody else? Once you, you signed up also, but why don't you just save your five minutes? There are people in opposition to this, and if you need time to...
That'd be fine.
...go at the end, that'll be saved.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Okay, we also had, I think, one of your signatories, Madison Pruitt. Kitchens RTA.
My name is Madison Pruitt. I'm the owner of Kitchens RTA. I'm in that surrounding area. I obviously entail what you said, because I only have Wawa and Wendy's that they just brought to me. Other than that, it was McDonald's, where I had to go left or right, you know? My half-hour lunch turned into two hours. I don't give back like that, so I just don't take my lunch. I just have it there. So having that development and new area over there, because the surrounding areas are criminal intent, people are kind of scared to go over there or pass through there, so I feel like the new development would bring kind of a friendly environment to be like, hey, we can kind of come through here, and it's not so bad.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Chuck O'Neil, and then Katrina Shadix, Luanne Gelzer, Ali Ahmed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, my name is Chuck O'Neil, 2329 Park Village Place, Apopka, Florida, president of Speak Up Wakava, Inc. I come here today to speak to you on behalf of my organization and the members of the organization who live on and enjoy the Wakava River. You may ask why we would be concerned with a project such as this. It's the same reason that people in the Apalachicola Bay are concerned with what goes on in the city of Atlanta. This parcel and everything that goes on around it affect the quantity of water that comes out of the Wakava River, because it drains through the soil into the upper Florida aquifer and moves towards the springs at Wakava Springs, Rock Springs, et cetera. Whenever these parcels are covered over with concrete and roofs, it detracts from the amount of water that's entering into the aquifer, and it also increases the amount of surface water. That surface water goes into retention ponds and things like that that evaporate and never make it into the aquifer and towards the river. The final thing I'd like to say is I'm concerned with the method of notice. I realize that the city's guidelines indicate that people who live immediately around the parcel be notified, but the people on the Wakava River are also impacted by this. And I believe that those people and the people who enjoy Wakava Springs, the people from Orlando who come to Wakava Springs, which is located in Orange County, that they also are impacted by this. And I would hope in the future, if not when, that there's a new standard set forth that broadens the notice so that it reaches the people in the Wakava study area in general and on the Wakava River in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. How about give them to the clerk, and she'll distribute them? It's five, but if you need a little more.
So today I'm speaking, I'm Katrina Shadix, 1421 Brigham Loop, Geneva, director of Bear Warriors United. Today I'm speaking for an Orlando resident who could not be here today. It's her first day of school. She teaches, Dr. Jones. And Commissioner Hill, to address before, we're going to be speaking on kind of the same thing that happened about two years ago when we came to speak against y'all spot zoning Princeton Oaks. And at that meeting, you said that you had spoken to the homeless people that lived in the woods.
You gotta address council, not me.
Okay, addressing everyone, specifically you, because of what you said, that you spoke to the homeless people and that you were going to guarantee them jobs with this warehouse project. Well, that never happened.
I never said...
And not only did the homeless people not get jobs, neither did the people living in the neighborhood. That has been negatively impacted. So I just wanted to bring that up. So, you know, it'd be hard to kind of...
You're inaccurate, ma'am.
I'm accurate, and we have the tapes, but I'm going to go about what Dr. Jones says now.
Miss, if you could just have dialogue with the council as a whole and not engage...
Okay, now I'm going to say what Dr. Jones wrote, and y'all all have copies. So she says, "I've tried to schedule appointments via phone with several council city members, but according to dates, those members scheduled were booked through this week. I am opposed to this ordinance. The city council would best serve the people of Orlando, your constituents, who voted for you so that you can make decisions that positively impact them by reassessing this ordinance. Currently, there are many holes allowing developers to destroy important areas that need to be protected, such as the wetlands and forested wetlands located in the Wakava study area. This includes the primary tributary headwaters of the Wakava River and the Little Wakava River. Wetlands, the council has voted to destroy in order to build Princeton Oaks and the Packing District Park. While other local governments that have responsibility for Wakava wetlands and forested wetlands are passing ordinances and taking action to preserve their lands, the city of Orlando is the only local government who is actively working to destroy important Wakava wetlands. This ordinance, as currently written, does nothing to follow the mandate of the Florida state statute that protects these wetlands, and that is a violation that the city of Orlando seems determined to commit, as evidenced by ordinance 2018-30 and the plans to destroy Wakava wetlands in order to create the Packing District Recreation Park. The Wakava River itself is federally protected, and its water corality is already being threatened by the construction of Princeton Oaks and will further be compromised by ordinance 2018-30 and the Packing District Park if it is constructed. A forward council truly committed to environmental stewardship would follow federal and state laws and make the conservation and preservation of all wetlands, forested wetlands, and other lands in the Wakava Spring Shed and basin a priority. The addition of substantial protections for the Wakava wetlands and Wakava wetland forests within the Orlando city limits to this ordinance would give Orlando the opportunity to meet the TMDL requirements of the state for municipalities that have impaired water bodies within their jurisdiction, especially when those impaired water bodies flow into a federally protected river system. This ordinance does nothing to follow federal and state legislation protecting wildlife and plant species and their habitat, and as a result, violations of those laws will continue to occur. This ordinance also does not address the need to leave old growth forests intact in order to maximize the absorption of carbon dioxide in the city of Orlando. The ordinance is woefully inadequate, and as a conservation expert, it is my opinion that this ordinance should be rewritten if Orlando city government is truly interested in being a responsible environmental steward. If this ordinance is passed, it will negatively impact a number of communities in the Wakava study area." Thank you.
Thank you. And your, what you handed out will be part of the record, what you just read. Thanks. Let's see, that was Katrina. Luanne Gelzer, and then Ali.
We just need to turn this, please go ahead.
Okay, that's fine.
Hello, my name is Ali Ahmed, and I'm speaking to oppose city ordinance 2018-30. I'm just going to read for you. I've been working to make a coalition and to oppose this ordinance. I'm going to read for you a letter sent to you by Dr. Lisa Soto from the Biology Department at UCF and Executive Director of Marine Resources Council. Dear Commissioners, please oppose city ordinances 2018-30 and 2018-35 that will destroy Wakava wetlands and forested wetlands located south of Silver Star Road, north of West Colonial Drive, east of Mercy Drive, and west of Orange Blossom Trail. These wetlands need to be placed into permanent conservation to protect our precious Wakava River. As you know, the Wakava River is designated a Florida Outstanding Waterway, a Florida Canoe Trail, and both a state and national wild and scenic river. Wakava Springs State Park, established in 1969, sees about 335,000 visitors a year who bring millions in revenues to the region. The Wakava is good for our economy and our residents' peace of mind. Compromising the wetlands that provide clean water to the Little Wakava River will damage the Wakava River forever. These irreplaceable wetlands are critical to the health of the Wakava River. Once they have been destroyed, they are gone forever. The system will never be the same again, and water quality will further deteriorate. Be a partner in protecting the Wakava River. Many in central Florida are working to protect our water resources, especially our area's special gem, Wakava Springs. Seminole County, Altamont Springs, and Longwood are working hard to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus from entering the spring shed, removing septic tanks, implementing stormwater projects, and doing research to change behavior. Friends of the Wakava River are working regionally and at the state level to get lands in the spring shed protected in conservation status. Passing this ordinance will compromise everyone else's hard work, resulting in permanent damage and worse water quality. Please oppose this action and join the League of Partners, working hard every day to protect the Wakava River. It will take our state's great leaders to protect our great waters. Please take a stand for the beautiful Wakava River, and thank you for your service to the community. Respectfully submitted, Lisa Soto.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Luanne Gelzer, 7674 St. Stevens Court, Orlando, zip 32835. Great performance today. Great performance today, but the community is saddened today. For the record, because I know how you're going to vote, let's just be honest, with the citizens that are watching and the ones who are beginning to understand what is going on on the west side of Orlando. Sustainable living for the city of Orlando, especially on the west side, is a four-letter word. You say they're not pristine wetlands. We already took 2,000 trees on WD Judge and John Young for Princeton Oak. Now you own Princeton proposing to do some more damage. You keep doing damage to something that's been here before our time. So about a month ago, Mayor Diaw, when we did the first reading, I asked about the city of Orlando footprint, and what would your footprint be like? And an environmental footprint is the effects that a person, company, or activities has on the environment. And for right now, I'm concerned about your environmental footprint, especially with the Wakava wetlands. I've given you a failing grade before on gentrification and paramour. You're failing our community. You can say whatever you want to say about it'd be great, it gonna bring some job. We've heard all of that. What we're saying is, would this be allowed on the east side of town? And most likely, it would not be allowed. So we're saying, why do you keep coming into communities of color, poor communities? You don't notify anybody but the people... don't notify anybody but the people within 300 or 400 feet, the businesses, you don't look at the impact, and when you look at the impact, it's after the fact. And the fact is, we don't buy it. We don't buy you changing this. It's conservation, it's protected wetland, some of them on state and federal levels. You think you supersede the federal government on a state and a federal level? You already got one lawsuit, here come another one. Here come another one. All we're saying is apply the law equally in all communities. If it's protected, leave it the way it is. The future of our city is not just about what you get from it, it's what you leave, a legacy. And when I talk about all the changing of the zonings and ordinance to appease a very small group of individuals, that 1%, the developers, it seem like you open up the doors and they come flooding in and they get exactly what they want. And when people come before you saying, we just want what is protected, what is for the future of our city, and what you're doing on the east side of town, do it on the west side of town. So Mayor Dyer, I said, it's a four-letter word, you're flunking. You said we're a sustainable city, when I told people to call, they listened to you, and you talk about how proud you are about sustainability, and how we're all about doing the right thing for our citizens of the city of Orlando. Well, I'll tell you this, Mayor Dyer, the world is beginning to watch. I partner with the Florida Interfaith Climate Action Network and several other organizations. You might go ahead and pass this today, but today begins the fight that you have brought on yourself when we have said, stop, look, this needs to stop. You keep saying, we're just going to take 13 acres here, 100 acres here, you're destroying the wetlands. Your action, little bit by little bit, nobody might not be watching. More and more people beginning to watch your actions. And your actions, when it comes to the community, especially the urban community, is poor. So you've done a great show today, it was magnificent, but we know you're not telling the truth, and these are wetlands, and they're protected, and we will be back, we will not give up our fight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Bob Lockman, did you want to come back up? Or not? Okay. Why don't we take these individually, then? Let's, Commissioner Hill had made the motion, and Commissioner Sheehan on both 2018-35 and 2018-30. Let's take them in the order that they are on the agenda, so 2018-35, is there a discussion?
Yeah, can I ask a quick-
Commissioner Gray.
Quick question of Elizabeth, if I could?
Yeah.
You just grouped them?
I'm sorry?
You grouped them, they're one and two. Mayor Dyer, there's one and two.
Correct.
You grouped them?
For the testimony and for the-
Then I had 10.5 more minutes. We went through this one?
No, we went, I said that at the very beginning, that we were hearing all this at once. All right, Elizabeth?
Yeah, Elizabeth, a couple of quick questions. Did the opposition provide any kind of empirical data about the wetlands or the destroying anything?
No, we don't have any specific information from them.
Just the public testimony, okay. And then the second thing, just to confirm, on page six of your presentation, I think you're showing not one but four state departments had zero objection to this?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So the motion passes, and now we'll be on Ordinance 2018-30, discussion or questions?
Hey, Mayor, Denise, did you read the title of the second ordinance?
I did not.
So before you take the vote, why don't we at least read the title aloud on the second ordinance?
Yep, go ahead and read the title, then.
Can I ask a question real quick, too?
Commissioner Ings.
And this is reference the motion that Commissioner Hill made, reference the, keeping out the fast food restaurants and that kind of thing? Was that part of this first ordinance, 2018-35?
It relates to both.
Okay, so how do we deal with that, after you do the other one?
So the clerk had not made, had not read the second ordinance. Commissioner Hill made a motion that related to both of the ordinances, so we could get in a proper posture to have a presentation and then testimony that related to both ordinances. We're going to correct the fact that the ordinance had not been read. I'll go ahead and ask Commissioner Hill, just as a safety, to make a second motion, and then we'll vote on it. All right.
That's the clarity I need.
Madam Clerk, read the 2018-30.
Ordinance 2018-30, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located south of Silver Star Road, west of North John Young Parkway, and north of West Princeton Street, comprised of 15.89 acres of land, more or less, and 2.55 acres of land, more or less, from Conservation Zoning District with the Wakava Overlay District to Urban Activity Centered Zoning District with the Wakava Overlay District in part, and from Holding Zoning District with the Wakava Overlay District to Conservation Zoning District with the Wakava Overlay District in part, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of script, errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
I approve the proposed ordinance of 2018-35, with the additional condition-
You could just adopt the motion that you made from the last time.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Sheehan was the second.
Yes.
Motion and a second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, this was personal privilege, we're going to have a copy of that for the second reading? Copy of the amendment?
That was the second reading. That was the second reading.
Okay, just wait we get a copy.
Yep.
Outside the minutes. I was, I was one off, I'm sorry.
Okay, number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2018-43, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located south of East Robinson Street, west of North Thornton Avenue, east of North Higher Avenue, and north of East Jefferson Street, and comprised of .70 acres of land, more or less, from 0-1-T Low Intensity Office Residential with a traditional city overlay district in part, and R-2AT One Family Residential with a traditional city overlay district in part, to Plan Development with a traditional city overlay district, providing a development plan and special land development regulations of the Plan Development District, providing for severability, correction of script, errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
So move second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter? Luana Gelsor?
Luana Gelsor, 7674 St. Stevenson Court, the process. If you're doing a second reading, Mayor Dyer, and you're making amendment, you've got to go back to the community and let them be able to look at what the amendment is. So on this ordinance, I am, I am in shock that you're an attorney, we have an attorney, and when it comes to 2018-
Luana, are you speaking to 2018-43?
Mayor Dyer, I'm speaking on 2018-43, and the process is flawed. Do an amendment to this one and see what happens. If you're amending any second reading ordinance, be it 2018-43, 2018-33, any of them, if it's a second reading and you will make an amendment, you have to come back and do another reading. You made an amendment at the second reading, and you did not give the people the opportunity to see what the second amendment would be and to be able to speak on it, Mayor Dyer. It's all about the process. How much power do you need over the community that you are supposed to serve? Just follow the process and be fair. But thank you for this evidence, because we will enter this in as a part of our lawsuit. Thank you, Mayor Dyer.
You know, it's oftentimes, no.
Let it go.
No, no, I must say this, because I am upset about the race baiting. I am, you might not notice, a black female from this very community, and I have been elected to be the voice of this community, and they entrust me to do what's right by them. And no, now we're talking about amendment to keep fast food out of a urban community and promote healthy food. This is just for the sake of grandstanding and trying to be on front street. That, if you are someone that care about the west side of Orlando-
Luana, we've given you the courtesy, you stopped at Turner Michael.
Turn it off. Send the police. Amendment, it's not what the amendment was about, Mayor Dyer, it was the process.
Well, we appreciate your expertise.
You have to come back. You can do it, thank you, it's not grandstanding, it was the process as I started, it's the process. Follow the process, Mayor Dyer.
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Not afraid of you.
Not trying to make you afraid, Luana.
I don't cheat. Still don't live in here for the shit.
Okay, discussion?
Get out. Prove it. Get out.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, number four, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2018-33, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, deleting Chapter 38 of the Code of the City of Orlando entitled Minimum Standards Code, creating Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Orlando entitled Property Maintenance Code, to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code with general and technical amendments, performing cross-references through this Code of the City of Orlando, and providing for severability, codification, correction of script, errors, and effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Let's see, motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, ordinances on first reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2018-46, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the Starwood Plan Development Zoning District, providing an amended land use plan for the plan development and a master sign plan, providing for additional conditions, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of script, errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today.
Mayor, just before you adjourn-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
-do you want to go back? Staff recommends that that second hearings ordinance, second read ordinance, should also have a 501 hearing, and that that 501 hearing, sorry, that that 501 motion should move the second ordinance to its, the city council's regular time on the August 20th meeting, and then on the first ordinance that you did the 501 motion on, we recommend that that hearing actually occur on September 4th, just so that we can meet an advertising deadline.
Okay, so let's do it properly procedurally, because guess what, I actually do know procedure. We're going to reconsider the vote by which we moved the second hearing on 2018-44 to August 20th, so I need a motion to reconsider that.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor of reconsidering the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so it is back before us, and this time, we will vote to move it to September the 4th, Kyle, on that one?
Yes.
Okay, to September the 4th, so I need a motion on that.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so that one's 2 o'clock on September 4th, and then we'll take up Ordinance 2018-45 for-
August 20th.
August 20th. Is there a motion on that for 2 o'clock? Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. So we will hear both of those at our 2 o'clock meetings at the appropriate date. Ready to go on general appearance?